Good evening and welcome to the Thursday, June 1st, 2023 Scarborough Board of Education Public Meeting. Diane, can you please call the attendance?
Sure.
Ms. Gammon?
She's been excited.
Mr. Callahan?
Here.
Ms. Leong?
Here.
Mrs. Lindstrom?
Here.
Mr. Mayorino?
Here.
Ms. Tarpeanian?
Here.
Mr. Peenihoff?
Here.
Ms. Bertulia?
Here.
And Mr. Shumway?
Here.
Perfect, thank you. But everybody, please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. Agenda item 4.0 is adjustments to the agenda. I do have one adjustment. I would like to move Agenda Item 11.0 Student Representative Reports up to, and it would become the new 8.0. So recognitions would become nine, Superintendent Report would become 10, Chair 11, and so on. Are there any other adjustments this evening?
That is it.
Right. Agenda Item 5.0 is public comment. Is there anybody wishing to make public comment this evening? All right, seeing none, I will close that. Agenda Item 6.0 is the Spotlight Award recipient. So for this, I will turn it over to Gillian.
All right, so this week, this month is really special to all of us on the board and many people in the room. This person is going to be surprised, and we're really looking forward to this person has really worked extremely hard for us over the years. So we're very excited to present our June Spotlight Award to Kelly Johnson. And pulling it off without Kelly knowing has been a whole thing.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Diane and the crew. So, all right. So, and this nomination comes from all of us. And there will be a video. I just want to say that I remember very clearly when Jeff told me the news that you were leaving, and I, my very first response was, because all of us, all of us that are sitting up here, all of the board members that come before us, we all rely on you so much, and you do everything to make it easy for us, and you have no idea how much we appreciate you. Thank you for everything you have done. We really appreciate you. All right, do you want to take a picture with her?
We got to find her.
We have to give her her, well, we couldn't.
She, she has them in storage.
Yeah. Technically, when people win this award, they get a lovely award, and they get a lovely mug, but certainly we couldn't ask Kelly to get that out for herself. So it was hard enough to, to pull this off without her, her knowing, so many lies.
So many lies.
Yes, up to and including last night. Yes, yes. I told her that I was going to make an adjustment to the agenda. I said, don't worry about sending it out to everybody. I'll just tell everybody we're not doing it anymore.
Poker face.
So thank you so much for, for working with us and for helping it, helping us all get adjusted to the board and get all of our work. We, we really appreciate you. We wish you the very best of luck. Thank you. All right, is there any other, oh, comments? Do you want to take a photo now, or you want Julie to do it later?
Afterwards, yeah.
Sounds good. All right. All right, Agenda Item 7.0 is the 2025 Scarborough High School Latin Trips. I'm going to invite Michelle Shup to the podium.
Um, I just wanted to say that I feel like this particular group of retirees, I just got like cut off at, I don't know, here. Because whenever anyone asks me a question, and I don't know the answer, I just say, I'll email Kelly Johnston. I'm just going to email Kelly Johnston, and she'll know the answer, and if she doesn't share, well, so I, I really appreciate everything you've done. You're very open to everyone across the district, and it's, it's going to be a lot. And I also just wanted to say to Monique and to Sue, is she here? Oh, there she is. Um, it has been a real honor to work with you and to learn from you. You are extraordinary educational leaders. I don't know. I don't know probably more than four people, and you're two of them, who every time they get hit with something that is an opportunity for growth, they take the opportunity to grow. And I just think that is exceptional, and I'm so grateful for both of you, and I, unlike everyone else, I hope you guys never come back. Just go and live your lives and have just, you have given enough, right? So thank you so much, unless you want to come on one of my Italy trips. Okay, so. So hello, I'm kind of bummed out, Colby, because my updated power, uh, Google slide deck has lots of pictures of you in it. So I thought that would be fun for you, but I get to look at you. So here you are. Okay. So hello, my name is Michelle Shup. I am one of the Latin teachers at the high school. And I'm just telling you about our 2025 Italy trip, um, which is open to advanced Latin students and advanced art students. So could we go to the next slide, please? Oh, thank you. So the dates of the trip are going to be July 1st through the 11th, 2025. We will be going to, we'll be going from the Adriatic down to the Bay of Naples, back up to Rome. So we'll be going to Venice, Ravenna, Florence, Orbietto, Sorento, Pompeii, Roma, and Cap. So really, really beautiful, classic Italian trip. The learning goals for this trip are directly tied to the learning goals for Latin 1, 2, 3, and 4, as well as several of the advanced visual arts classes. And we travel with the ACIS company. I have been traveling with them since 1995. In 1995 was my senior year in high school, my parents, who absolutely couldn't afford it. It's a joke now, when I think about how much that trip cost and how much they cost now. Sorry, I didn't mean to give everyone a heart attack, but, um, like, they absolutely couldn't afford it, and they somehow sent me anyway, and it changed the entire course of my life. It affected who I married, it affected how we raise our kids, it affected everything. And if board members, you have any questions about the company itself, I put a link in there, um, which is from the company about how we keep our kids safe, both health-wise and also all the other things. Thank you. So students who will be eligible to go are students who have completed two years of Latin by the date of departure. So that's kids who are currently in Latin 1, 2, 1 or 2, and then kids who are coming in, in eighth, the rising eighth graders. One of them is my daughter. She's very excited. She transferred to Latin just so she could go on the trip. I was like, you know, you could have come anywhere. And she's like, no, I want to, I don't want to cheat. Um, and then art teachers are recommending some of their advanced visual arts students to come on the trip. And the chaperones will be myself. This is my 19th international trip with students. Mr. Davis, who is the other Latin teacher, it'll be his third international trip, and my husband, Tim Goble, who does have all his clearances. And he, this is, this will be his ninth trip. And I also linked in there, if you guys just are like, I really like to see pictures and live vicariously through students, that link for the board members, you can click on that and go to all the blogs from the past Scarborough era trips. So I just want to let you know a little bit about my background. From personal experience, this will be my 19th trip since 2003 with students as a, as a travel leader. I am fluent in Italian. I do also speak five other languages, but Italian is the most relevant. Though, when we're in the north, I have to use the German a lot, too. So that's kind of fun. I have lived in both Italy and Greece, and professionally, you could really sum all this up by saying Italy's my jam, like, Italy's my favorite. But if you want the fancy language, I have been a Latin teacher for 22 years, like my bachelor's, my bachelor's degree in Latin and Classical Humanities, my MA is in interdisciplinary humanities with a focus, a special focus on the intersection between visual art and the literature of the early Roman Empire. If you ever want to read 122 pages on that, you'll be the only one. So please let me know what I wrote. Um, and I've also served as a teacher guide to other teachers in the city of Rome on multiple occasions. So this is not a cheap trip. In the 18, it doesn't cost $8,000 for the record. In the 18 trips that I've led up till this summer, including this summer's trip, the trips were 5,000 or less. It was like a threshold for me I was unwilling to cross. But because of COVID and all of the things that have gone along with it through the travel industry, this one's, this one's around 6,000. So in, because I deeply care about equity from a, from every perspective. I started using this working students potential financial plan about 13 years ago with my students. And I would say out of the 450 students that I've taken, um, about 60% have paid for the entire trip themselves. One kid was 14 when she registered, and she couldn't get an actual, a job. This was in Pennsylvania. And in Pennsylvania, the minimum wage is still 7.25. So she couldn't get a job, so she just went to every public place in town and put up posters that said, I will clean your toilets. I will pick up after your cats. I will do anything. And she earned every cent herself. Her parents, they couldn't even give her $20, but they did let her go, which is a gift of trust. So I worked this out for kids, um, so that kids and parents can see that because we have two years, they really can get there. They can get there on their own. Now, if it is a very seriously financially distressed home, maybe not, because maybe their pay has to go to help run the household. But if it is a student who is earning the money on their own, not only can they do it with pretty flexible work hours, I mean, six hours per week during the school year is not much. But with some flexible work hours and taking out fun money and giving them breaks, they're going to own, they're going to earn $2,000 more than they would need without having to ask their parents for a dime. And also they're spending money and passport money. And that's it. Does anybody have any questions? Yeah, okay, good. See, that's good.
Colby, you went last year, right?
Yeah. It's too bad you don't have the updated one, because it's a good picture of Colby dressed as a gladiator in the war museum.
Feel free to send that on.
Oh, sure. Yes, I will. I have a whole gallery full of them, in action even, going down in the middle of the arena.
Oh, yeah, we'll, we'll find some way to sneak that in, for sure. All right, well, thank you so much. This is a wonderful experience.
Thank you.
Thank you for organizing. All right, so our new Agenda Item 8.0 are the Student Representative Reports. So, um, let me tell you the slide number, Diane. So should I be there one, otherwise it'd be 73. 73. May, can you just type it in the box there? Would that be easier? All right, so we will pass this over to Julia and Colby.
All right, so the Wentworth Garden has been very busy this spring. Deb Justum, the new garden teacher, has been very busy with classes and a variety of lessons such as composting and gardening maintenance are being taught to the kids. And as you can see in this photo, the garden looks very beautiful and well-maintained, and it's in very good shape. So.
At the high school, we just had May Awards two weeks ago. And so on the left, we have the juniors' book awards. So they get these little awards, either like a certificate or a little book, or sometimes there's scholarships involved. Um, and so quite a great group of people got some really cool gifts from that. And also, all of the senior events are starting up today. It was our last day of school, so that was really exciting. We did our chalk drawings. You can see little Husky there featured. Yeah, we did that in chalk, so there were three of us going, and it was, it was a nice group effort. We were all out there. It was a little too hot for it, but we made it work, and it was great. Um, and also, we had prom as well a couple of weeks ago. That was also great. I've heard from a lot of people that it was much better than last year, and it was, it was a great time. And on the next slide, um, we have some very exciting news, but before I share that, I'd like to just give a really big thank you to the board. It's been a great two years, and I feel like I've learned so much and improved so much in public speaking and just everything overall that this role requires. And you guys have been wonderful, just representatives and mentors as well. So thank you so much. Um, and now moving on, I'm excited to announce the new junior rep for next year. Grace Ledger will be taking over the position. She's involved with Buddy Systems, Source of Strength, tennis and volleyball. She volunteers at the Annual Refuge League of Greater Portland and is involved in a women in government program run by the State House. So she's very involved. She will be amazing in the role, and she is here today. And if you'd like to say a couple of words, no pressure at all, you don't have to. But I'm sure she'll be amazing.
Thank you. Congratulations. So starting at our next board meeting, which is the 15th, Colby will move into the senior role, and, and then Grace would take over as our, our junior representative. So. Which is a perfect segue into our 9.0 recognitions. So we will start with 9.1, which is the retirees. So I'll turn that over. Oh, let me tell you. It is going to be 13.
All right. Next part of our agenda, we are going to be, um, uh, celebrating and sharing some words for our retirees for the class of, was the class of 2023? And, um, with 35 years of service, the first person we are going to recognize is Peggy Clements. Thank you, Anne.
Good evening. Unfortunately, Mrs. Clements isn't here, but I'm going to talk about her anyway. She gave me permission. So Peggy has been in the district for 35 years. She began in 1988. She was first hired to be the Wentworth Title I teacher and quickly moved into K-2 education where she taught kindergarten, first, and second grade. She ended her career as the instructional math coach for the last 11 years, which blew my mind to think we've had coaches for 11 years. How is that possible? Feels like they just started. Um, she has had so many accomplishments and memorable moments. Um, just at the retirement celebration last week at the throttle, a woman came up to her and said, I was in your kindergarten class in 1991, and now I'm the world language chair at the high school. So it was such a nice moment for Peggy. world language chair at the high school. So it was such a nice moment for Peggy. Um, and so she has had so many students over the years that remember her and come back and visit. She is thrilled to be out on Peaks Island now and getting involved in the Portland schools out there. And she's also excited, um, to be with her grandkids and reading and just being on island time. Thank you, Peggy.
Next on our list is Monique Culbertson with 31 years of service to Scarborough Schools. I guess I'll stay put here to say a few words about, um, Monique. Um, I won't be going into the numbers of years of service, even though I just did. Um, or the many stories and decisions that have helped to shape the powerful educational experiences shared by generations of Scarborough students and families. Mostly because we also need to leave time for her thorough and highly informative presentation on K-12 academic achievement that will be coming during my superintendent's report. Here's a window into Monique's 31st year with Scarborough Schools as K-12 curriculum director. In response to a medical leave right before the opening of schools in September, Monique steps in to serve as Blue Points principal while also continuing to keep on the many, keep wearing the many hats as K-12 curriculum director. She takes on this hybrid role willingly and with little to no preparation, takes on a building principal position for which she has never been trained, earns the admiration and respect of teachers, family, uh, families and fellow school and district leaders. She helps with a seamless transition and hands off to our returning principal in January and continues to look forward and be a driving force behind strategic planning for Scarborough Schools now and into the future to extend long past her retirement this month. Monique continues to work intently with colleagues because she understands the work her impact is ultimately to develop and support our students and families. I have been struck and inspired by her selfless approach to leadership, her fierce advocacy for meeting the needs of all students and her desire to develop the skills and capacity of fellow educators to excel in their teaching and supportive kids. Thank you, Monique, for your service to Scarborough and the impact you will continue to have far beyond your last day this June. Kelly Johnston for 23 years with Scarborough Schools. Come on up. As oh, she says her foot is like 100%, right? No pain? We have such a special central office team. Thank you so much for your support, professionalism and ability to think on your feet and problem solve, no matter the request. You respond to everything immediately, attend to the details and maintain a positive, supportive, helpful tone, no matter what is happening around you. It's been such a pleasure to get to know you and work with you. And as a superintendent relatively new uh, to Scarborough community, I could not have asked for a better person to expertly support our central office team, the leadership council, and the needs of the board, board chair, subcommittees, you name it. You handle the multitude of daily challenges with grace and ease while at the same time breaking down last night's Patriots Bruins or Celtics game. So I will miss working with you and look forward to your visits to check in on us. And our next contestant, Carrie Curtis with the, at Saugus High School. And Sue, can you say a few words on Carrie? And then I, do I get to fill his retirement with himself again or no?
No.
Okay.
Some of you might remember that I spoke about Carrie at this evening last year. But, um, he did really retire, honest. But, um, throughout the summary, kept checking in to see if we had managed to hire a new STEM teacher. And the answer was no. And so about halfway through the summer, he contacted us and said he'd come back. So we rehired him because we had just finished doing everything to have him retire. So we started that process again and we hired him back for his third year for the 22, 23 school year. We have Carrie, we have recently hired a new STEM teacher. So I think you can safely retire this year. In this year alone, Carrie was able to be the first teacher in the new STEM classroom that he helped to design. He was able to work with Allison Avery and the Vex Robotics Team, which went all the way to the world competition in Texas. And he took his civil engineering students to UMaine to the Simmons Wind Turbine Challenge this spring, where 45 teams competed. This was our first try for SHS and our four teams placed 29th, 21st, 15th and 2nd. An awesome showing. Last week, Carrie and his wife became first time grandparents to Matthew Earl Lovett. So I think we know what they will be focused on in retirement. Once he figures out exactly what his new grandparent name is going to be. Thank you, Carrie, for adding so much to our school. You're going to be missed more than you could ever know. Congratulations.
Thank you very much. Sue. Sue, I think you can stay up there. Our, um, our next retiree that we'd like to honor is Sue Catch, 39 years with Scarborough Schools. I just want to take a little time and say some words for Sue. Sue, you'll probably correct me if I'm wrong on this, but I think if I had met Sue in her 31st year in Scarborough, uh, assistant principal of the high school at the time, she would likely not have expected to be retiring as principal a year of 39. Circumstances aligned in such a way that the Scarborough High School needed her leadership through some challenging times. Sue stepped up and led through some unprecedented challenges, including a global pandemic. I feel so fortunate to have had the opportunity to get to know Sue as a person, an educator and a leader. She inspires, builds leadership capacity in others, understands the importance of leading by example, treats staff like family and builds an open and collaborative culture across departments and the school as a whole. This is no easy task in a large high school to lead as a faculty member and assistant principal and principal, all in the same school building. Your work and impact has been and will continue to be profound in your daily presence at the front door throughout the building and seemingly at every community event will be sorely missed. Thank you, Sue, for the countless lives of Scarborough students and families you have impacted, for the colleagues and staff you have mentored and inspired, for your patience and willingness to share your expertise and team-first orientation with a superintendent new to town and for shaping Scarborough High School into a supportive, inclusive and effective learning community for all students and staff. And just so you know, going forward, I think I might have to diversify my CROC collection to make sure that I have a pair to coordinate with my tie for the day. So that would be good. And in your honor.
I'm ready again.
You're right. Back to work. George Jones with 18 years of service for the Scarborough Schools.
So George has been a social studies teacher for 45 years, although not all of those at Scarborough High School. Like most social studies teachers, I think that his favorite subject is American history. And George has always added creative flair to his classes, adding music, art, creative writing to those classes. In fact, one assignment I remember is where he had the entire class take sections of the Declaration of Independence to rewrite in modern language so that they really understood what it said. Then students posted their version in the hallways. So everybody walking by could read it and see what they had, um, changed it to. I can say that I always, um, was, it was fascinating to read their interpretations of, of that document. Um, also George annually would take summer, he'd apply for summer grants for professional development opportunities. One year, he and Joanne Allen, a retired art teacher, did a summer workshop with Mecca in Portland on Winslow Homer. The course continued through the next school year as well. Joanne went to one of his history classes and did Homer-esque art with them. And George went to her art class and did some history talks on Homer's time. The classes came together at the end of the year to recreate Homer's Snap the Whip painting, which we displayed at a spring concert that year. Another summer, George spent a week in New York learning and visiting, um, Ellis Island to bring that experience back to his students. Even more recently, in the last few years, George has worked to bring new electives to the social studies department. Courses like 20th Century Genocide and America Since World War II. It seems that in our history department, we don't often get past World War II, and he thought that needed to be corrected. Congratulations, George, on a wonderful teaching career and congratulations on your retirement. We wish you the very best and thank you for your service.
All right. And next on our, on our list, uh, retirees to celebrate is Rob Pellerin.
So
I heard nothing.
So Officer Rob Pellerin has served as this, as our school resource officer, SRO, at Scarborough Middle School for the last 14 years. Before coming to SMS, Rob gradu- graduated from the University of Southern Maine and began his law enforcement career at the Saco Police Department in 2001. He joined the Scarborough Police Department in 2005. In addition to being the SRO at SMS, he has also been a DARE instructor for fifth graders at the Wentworth Intermediate School. So it's been a wonderful transition. When the students move up to sixth grade, they know Rob. When asked to reflect on his time at SMS, Rob shared that it has been the honor of my life to work here at SMS. I feel like I have had a great opportunity to connect with students and help them in their time of need. It has always been my number one priority to keep our schools safe. He has certainly achieved this goal and more. As one colleague shared, Rob has a unique ability to balance the assertive and proactive energy of a law enforcement officer while always being approachable to staff and students. He always shows a genuine interest in those with whom he interacts and makes everyone feel valued. Rob may be retiring from being a police officer, but he shares that he is not retiring altogether. In July, he will be starting a new chapter in his life as a judicial marshal at the Cumberland County Courthouse. He wants to show students that it is always good to try new things in life. In addition, he'll be spending more time with his family, going camping and playing live music with his band. The middle school has been so fortunate to have Rob perform for us several times at staff gatherings and he's wonderful. So you'll have to look him up. Um, thank you, Rob, for all that you have done for our SMS community. Congratulations and enjoy retirement.
Okay. And we have Sue back, um, to speak on Ben Seider. Uh, 19 years with Scarborough, uh, Scarborough Schools. Congratulations.
Ben has been teaching at Scarborough for 19 years in the math department and focusing on Algebra I and geometry in recent years. In addition to teaching, Ben has also coached the math team, the mock trial team and the speech and debate team. I always knew when Ben was an advisor to a team because he was always signing out to go to Hannaford's to get treats for the troops. In retirement, Ben plans on working in his wood and glass shop, gardening, playing the piano a lot and spending more time with his kids, grandkids and his very best friend and girl in the world, his wife. Here are a few secrets about Ben that you may not know about. He hides Ghirardelli chocolate squares in the freezer in the teacher's room. And it's a good thing I didn't know that till recently. He makes an amazing key lime pie and key lime cake and he will travel all the way to Florida to get the key limes. Ben, do you share recipes? Um, Ben and members of his family have been balloon, um, handlers at the Macy's Thanksgiving Day Parade. Um, he used to have long hair and he played in an Allman Brothers cover band. So you might think he's a music teacher by day, but a math teacher by day, but he has a lot to offer. Ben tells me that he has absolutely loved teaching geometry and he often wakes up in the middle of the night with geometry problems bouncing around in his head. And he imagines that that will still continue for a while yet. Ben, we wish you the very best in your retirement. Thank you so much for all you've given to Scarborough High School. Congratulations.
All right. Our next retiree that we would like to celebrate with 24 years of ser- service is Lynn Slack.
Lynn Slack is also not with us tonight because she is with her grandchildren. Um, she started her career as a one-on-one special education ed tech at eight corners and then moved into the literacy ed tech positions at Wentworth. And then she returned home, um, as a literacy ed tech for eight corners where she's remained the rest of her career. Uh, Monique can attest to this, the Title I program at eight corners has grown and shrunk more than anything I've ever seen in my life, depending on the funding for the year. So we've gone from having just Lynn to having five other people. She's worked in hallways. She's worked in closets. She's worked in the back of the library. She's crammed four adults into one small therapy room. And she's at a corner in a classroom. She's worked everywhere with a smile on her face. She originally graduated college with a PE degree and was hoping to be a PE teacher, but, um, twins and a, and a third child kept her home and now she's, um, PE subs for us anytime we need somebody. She's the best resource, uh, recess duty person on the planet. She plays games. She's always there to make sure kids are okay and fair and safe. And she will be greatly missed. She is going to spend her time with her grandchildren and playing golf, tennis, pickleball, any sport she can, and reading and traveling.
Our next, uh, celebration is 23 years of service, Beth Souls.
Hi, everyone. I'm Kelly Crosby, the principal at Wentworth, and it's an honor to share a little bit about our math support teacher, Mrs. Elizabeth Beth Souls. William Thurston said mathematics is not about numbers, equations, computations or algorithms. It is about understanding. Mrs. Souls has demonstrated her understanding as a math support teacher at Wentworth School for 23 years. She's known for making math fun, building math foundations with understanding on a concrete level, advocating for all students, boundless energy, her ability to connect with students and a deep, deep love for math. She's a true lifelong learner, always listening to podcasts and participating in professional development wherever she can find it. She's an expert at meeting students at their level. Mrs. Souls truly cares. Mrs. Souls colleagues share that her ability to connect with students by encouraging thoughtfully challenging, authentic, authentically celebrating and developing students' self-efficacy is exemplary. Additionally, Mrs. Souls displays a contagious enthusiasm for math. Both the students and the teachers feel it. Words that describe Mrs. Souls include, these are from your colleagues too. Talented, dedicated, fully engaged, consistent, joyful, loyal, playful, creative, thorough and patient. Students share that she makes Students share that she makes math fun. Even though the math gets harder, she still makes it fun for us. And they say, every time my teacher tells me I'll be working with Mrs. Soles, I get really happy and excited. She loves to tell stories, listen to our stories, and have fun with us. It makes the time go by fast. We'll miss Mrs. Soles' all-in Spirit Day participation, her contagious energy for all things math, and her positive contributions to our school community as we wish her the very best in her retirement. We know that she will fully embrace being a Mimi with her grandbabies all the way from Maine to Arizona and her time with her husband, Rick. Congratulations, Beth.
All right, and our next retiree that we are celebrating tonight is Brenda Vogel.
All right, Brenda also couldn't be here tonight, but I'll share some thoughts anyway. So Scarborough Schools, we've had the good judgment to hire Brenda not once, but twice. Brenda started here as a resource room teacher and then moved to Connecticut for a while, came back. We hired her as a sub. And then since then, for the last 15 years, she's been a resource room teacher for us at the high school. And I asked some of our staff at the high school to share some thoughts about Brenda. And I think these words really speak to the type of teacher that she's been for us. So Brenda Vogel is more than a colleague. She is a caring friend. In fact, she's one of the kindest people that we know. She's always asking how she can lend a hand or support others in times of need. Most days, she'll pop into the doorway of your room or office to offer you a good morning, hello, and a smile. Brenda is smart, witty, patient, caring, extremely tolerant, and about as easygoing as anybody that we know. Rarely rattled even in the craziest of times, Brenda has always maintained a soft-spoken demeanor, a calm head in managing the many challenges of her special education classroom. Brenda's been an exemplary teacher and a mentor for her students over the years, providing them with a welcoming environment where they felt safe and free of judgment or ridicule. We're certain that her frequent displays of kindness and caring gestures will resonate in their memories for many years to come. Brenda's only likely hope is that they pay it forward to others. So Brenda's planning to enjoy time in retirement, traveling with her husband, Rick, and spending time with her three kids. So we thank Brenda for your dedicated service to so many students through the years. And she really has been a great friend, colleague, and teacher, and just an unbelievable mentor to a lot of kids through the years. So we really wish her the best in retirement.
All right, one final round of applause for all of our retirees. Thank you so much.
Any, any comments?
I would like to congratulate everyone. And Sue, I think you might be like the last of the people from Scarborough from when I was in school. It was just a few years ago. I don't know how you're old enough or I'm old enough to have it in this many years, but I remember from the first play, school musical production, she's Louise, it's unbelievable. And I know Pete Carpenter thinks the world of you too. Congratulations, guys. Take care.
All right, thank you. Congratulations. It's quite a, well, first, quite an accomplishment to work your career in the school district with our kids. And we say all the time up here, those of us up here say all the time, that our very best, the very best thing about Scarborough is our teachers and our staff. So thank you for all you do for our kids every day. It's not easy. It's never rainbows and unicorns all the time. And Mr. Seither, I'm looking at you because you did teach my child two years in a row, which is, bless your heart, right? But the way that you care for each child so deeply, it's definitely something that we all notice and we appreciate so much. So thank you and congratulations.
All right. Agenda item 9.2 is our student recognition because just like we have staff members that are retiring, we have a school board, school board member who's retiring. There's this slide. Yes, Ms. Yulia. So tonight, we say goodbye to Yulia, who has been our student rep for the last two years. So when I was looking through two years, two years is about 44 meetings here with us. That doesn't count your committee meetings you've attended. It doesn't account workshops we've had. That is just straight meetings. So all of that together is countless, countless hours. You have stuck with us even on the nights when we've gone really, really late. We, I know there's been nights you've had tests to study for and things to do, and yet you've stuck with us and stuck by us. So it's a lot. It's a lot on top of your schoolwork. It's a huge commitment. You dance, you have your extracurricular activities in your clubs, and your family, your friends, and your social life, but yet you stuck with us, and we all really, really appreciate you. You have been a fantastic representative for the kids at the school, and you should be so proud of yourself. When you said that you've grown so much in your speaking skills, it's funny, I was reflecting back when you first started. You're always thoughtful, and I can always see you, the wheels turning, and you're listening, and you're taking in, and you're evaluating. And I remember when you started speaking up and sharing your opinion, and it's all of us were like, huh, yeah. That's really a good idea, something we hadn't thought about, right? Because you bring a different perspective to this table that we all, even though, yes, it was just two years ago or so that we graduated high school, you're in the thick of it right now. And so you bring this really good perspective. You always, and anything we've talked about, policies, procedures, the budget, the way that our policies impact the students now, you have been an important voice and an important perspective for us, and it helps to guide all of our work. So thank you so very much for that. We all wish you the best of luck as you head off for college. We're looking forward to watching you from here, from home, and cheering you on. And we can't wait to see what you do in your future, and we're so proud of you. So congratulations. All right. All right, agenda item 10.0 is the superintendent's report. 10.1 is the strategic goals, progress, and ESSA planning. So for one last time, I suppose we'll invite Monique.
Absolutely. And we'll jump right into this. And Monique's also going to be inviting up our building leaders as well during the course of this. And I just want to stress as we start, you know, we're blessed in Scarborough, and I certainly feel blessed as superintendent to have administrators who are truly instructional leaders. And I think, you know, I think these slides and the information that we'll be presenting tonight really kind of illustrate that and drive that home in terms of where we are, how our students are doing, and then where we're headed to make sure that we're constantly, continually improving organization and learning organization. So I will turn it over to Monique, and we can dig right in.
Wonderful, yes. It is going to be a wonderful opportunity to recognize our progress and recognize the hard work of not just teachers, but leaders and support staff, everyone in the district, including our students and how hard they've worked this year. And we're going to hopefully give you a picture of the progress that they've made this year. So we're going to review our progress on our district and building goals. We'll do a, not necessarily a deep dive into the data, a little bit of an overview, and I'll highlight some of the successes. But we really want to recognize the progress this year because it has been significant. Also, there is a functional aspect of this around updating our ESSA, our federal funding, in the application process, and an opportunity for the public to comment as well. As you know, we have four strategic target areas, and we'll be talking about the goals that we have set under specifically Target Area 1 and Target Area 2. A big question is, as we move forward, do we stay the course with our strategic plan? We have an improvement planning document. And one of the things that we do as we look at the data is we're constantly asking ourselves, okay, for the focus areas for the next year, are we going to continue to stay focused on social, emotional learning and needs, literacy, math, curriculum consistency, and absenteeism and truancy? And that's where we look to the data, and that happens on an ongoing basis. So to start, we did set three very specific goals, one for literacy, one for mathematics, and one for social and emotional learning. We use iReady at K-2, and NWEA is the state assessment. And we look at that data as well to measure our progress. In those areas of literacy, we would like to see our students move from 46% meeting or exceeding growth targets, because the focus is on growth. And then in mathematics, moving from 42% to at least 52% in the growth areas. We use the Panorama survey data in order to measure our progress in the skill areas, the SEL skill areas for social, emotional learning. And that is a duplicate slide. Let's keep cruising along. Just so that, just to bring back to your memory, when we talk about Panorama data, it is a survey, and we look at percent favorable. So there are typically five choices for answers, and we're looking at the top two responses. These are our results. I'm not going to go into a whole lot of detail around those, but these are the results of our Winter SEL Skills Survey. We also did a survey this spring, and those are our supports, our SEL supports, where staff were surveyed and students were surveyed. Leadership Council is still in the process of analyzing that data. But of note, in those areas that are in bold and italic, our Leadership Council and our SEL Building Committees took a look at those areas and identified specific targets for improvement using that data. So I'd like to invite now the K-2 principals up to the podium because we're going to talk a little bit. I'll do a little bit of the data overview, and then I will let them speak to the specifics and the specific examples of the progress that's been made at the K-2 level. So as I said before, we use the iReady data. This chart is an example of the progress made in reading across Blue Point, Eight Corners, and Pleasant Hill. The red and the yellow, those highlighted bars, the red and the yellow indicates, red is students who are two or more years behind, yellow, one or more years behind. The lighter green is mid to early on grade level, and the shaded green is at or beyond grade level. So you'll notice the smaller, lighter shaded bar underneath indicates fall achievement. And you'll notice the large, the long yellow bar and the red. And you'll see in the graph up above the increase in green. And so you can see across all three schools, our students performed similarly, and the growth is pretty remarkable there in terms of the increase in green in the spring. So that's a visual display of the progress that our students have made in reading. Another chart, another view of the data, which is pretty darned amazing, I would say, this measures growth, and this is across grade levels. So across all three schools, our children who are kindergartners this year, let's focus on the percent met. There's annual growth, which is typical growth, the growth a student would typically make in a year. And then there's another metric called stretch growth. And that is the growth that a student who starts at a baseline needs to make in order to get to grade level or beyond. So it's a stretch growth target. Typically, for the grant purposes, we look at typical growth. But you will notice that 53, I think it's 53%, close to 53, and second graders knocked the ball right out of the park. 67% of students actually met their typical growth piece. In the next column over, if you look at stretch growth, we're looking at about 20% to 30% of our students actually met their stretch growth target, which is truly to be celebrated. We also look, we want to make sure all students are growing and progressing so that next column, the percentage of students who had an increased placement, moved in their placement, in other words, moved from either a red to a yellow or a yellow to a green, you'll notice up there that just about 70% of our students across the board made some sort of a placement improvement over the course of this year across K-2. So lots of good news there. All that target that we set, moving our students from 46% to 56%, I'll talk a little bit about the lack of data, grades 3 through 12. But the actual improvement was 55% for our K-2 students. So in reading, our students have done a wonderful job. Likewise, we look at, we take a deeper dive into foundational reading skills because we know how important those are in the development of reading skills. And we've also had several initiatives at K-2 in terms of focusing on both phonemic awareness, and this is the year one of implementation of From Phonics to Reading. So what this chart describes is we keep an eye on the percentage of students who are a year or more behind. So for example, kindergartners, in the fall of 2022, we had 47% of our kids were a year or more behind in the fall as a result of this assessment. We track them in the winter to make sure the trend is going in the right direction. And in the spring, the kindergartners across all three schools, only 10% of our students are a year or more behind. Phonics as well, we're in year one of that implementation, but you can see in the fall, 65%, 61%, 54%. And that has trended beautifully, 17%, 21%, and 25%. So we do want to keep an eye on those kiddos who are in yellow and red. And at the building levels, the data teams have conversations, and student support teams have conversations about those kids in order to provide interventions to keep them growing. In mathematics, again, I'm just going to point out that if you take a look at the yellow underneath and then look at the green and the shift, you can see across all schools, our students are performing similarly for those students who are early on and above, but a significant shift in a decrease in the yellow and the red and an increase in the green. Likewise, the math growth information, likewise, pretty impressive there as well. Not to the same extent as reading, but it's a different assessment, and we put quite a focus on the literacy skills for this year. Likewise, our third goal has been in the area of SEL and skill development. When our Leadership Council and teachers took a look at this data, we decided to use this data and identify a core instructional solution. And in the March workshop, we talked quite a bit about that process we went through to identify a core solution for our SEL. And we've begun training the trainers this spring, and they're going to be working this summer to develop the implementation for that. So we're going to continue to monitor the progress across these topics for our SEL, for our students. And now what I'd like to do is turn it over to principals who can share a little bit about progress in each of these areas.
Great. Well, good evening, everyone. I'm Jen Humphrey, the principal at Pleasant Hill School. It's great to be here tonight. We're really excited to share some of the areas of growth in literacy, math, and social, emotional learning from the course of this year. And I can't tell you how very proud we are of our growth in literacy specifically this year. Our staff has really dug in extremely deep, and our coaches have collaborated together to coordinate a real supportive effort toward supporting our educators within the classroom, doing some model lessons, some team teaching. And Anne Marie Henderson has really outdone herself with those efforts this year as our literacy coach, so we're very pleased with that. Our teachers have really dug in and, you know, explored this new area of curriculum for our students and tried new things and really maintained a growth mindset throughout this whole school year. And we've realized some wonderful progress as a result of their efforts. From Phonics to Reading implementation, as Monique just mentioned, is in year one of full implementation across K through 2. We have had all three of our coaches, Kelsey O'Neill, Peggy Clements, as well as Anne Marie, working together to really dig into some professional development offerings during curriculum time for our K through 2 teachers this year, centered around some self-identified areas of growth for those educators, which has been great. The iReady personalized learning modules that are available to students are used on a weekly basis to target their learning. are used on a weekly basis to target their learning. And that has been wonderful. And then as well, the Hegarty Phonemic Awareness Program that we've utilized this year has really helped us to realize some wonderful growth in the area of literacy. So I'll turn things over now to Anne to talk a little bit about math.
All right. Well, I'm always the most succinct person in the room, so this won't take very long. Um, so again, I ready, the I ready uh assessment and in impersonal learning modules have been so helpful for kiddos because it really targets what they need right now and and helps them grow their skills. So that's been a huge um piece of our growth this year because we've been able to implement it regularly, twenty minutes a week um for math and for reading um in the classroom. So it's really been very consistent and predictable and helpful. Um, and the kids think it's a game and they love to be on their Chromebooks for that long with their headphones and they think they're so cool and grown up. So it's all, it's a win for everybody. Um, the, again, the instructional coaches, I can't say enough good things about them and their support and um how they help model lessons and help new teachers get on board with the curriculum and help students who have moved into this, to the uh district who may not know math and focus um at all, or may not know math at all or English at all, how they can help um acclimate kids and get kids up to speed with, to be in the classroom and to really be gaining as well. Um, and our academic support program and and student support program, S S T and academic support, we spent a lot of time this year um sort of revising, redefining, revamping that program for next year and trying to make it far more consistent and um standardized from at least K five. And we're excited to see where that goes and how we're going to continue to support kiddos in all areas, not just math, but that's a huge piece of the math. You want to do S C L?
Sure, sure. So the last piece that we'd like to share with you tonight is uh something that we're really excited about, which is our social and emotional learning focus that we have um for next year. Uh, we, this year, as Monique mentioned earlier, uh really looked into the data that we had regarding S C L and realized some areas that were potential areas of growth for us. So we put together a committee of people that was a wide varied committee made up of some specialists from the Allied Arts, as well as classroom teachers and counselors and administrators. And really looked at um several different areas of social and emotional programming that were analyzed through um Harvard, actually. And um, you know, I I like to call it the Reader's Digest or Consumer Reports. It was the, the catchphrase, the consumer reports of um S C L programs. And we really dug into the information that Harvard um had for us and really looked at some uh programs that would best suit our needs. So we're really excited to be um moving forward with the Mind Up for Life approach, which will um build in training for um how the brain functions when we are learners and how we can best um prepare our brains for learning. So we're looking forward to bringing that to students and to staff next year in terms of an S C L approach. So um this summer's work to train the trainers is already ongoing. We are almost finished with our spring training and then we get to dig into the real work of rollout and implementation. So we're really looking forward to it.
I think Mrs. Crosby, you're up next as well. So for the Wentworth School, this graphic is a wonderful graphic because in the spring of twenty twenty one, there was an open-ended question we asked students at three, five, six, eight and nine, twelve. Uh, really thinking about everything in your life right now, what makes you feel the happiest? Uh, and it was a close call between pets and family. Um, but I think family is a little bit the largest um for our Wentworth students in that word cloud. Um, so data does come in all sorts of shapes and sizes. Actually, in terms of our progress on our goals, we did do a report to the school board in February and we reported fall to fall. And it was important to have that fall to fall to report uh because we don't have any spring data from the state this spring. Uh, the state has moved from, to a new assessment this spring, so we cannot um have access to that data until they do their performance in their benchmark setting. So this leaves us in a bit of a lurch in terms of reporting on our grant progress. That said, we do use internally, we're using our classroom-based assessment to track growth for students. Um, but as a result of that February report, um, what we learned in looking at the data, looking um fall to fall and last fall to last spring, um, our students are generally performing above the national average and their performance is improving over time. May not be the amount that we want to see, but they are improving over time. Uh, so this report and six, eight, nine, to L will be a very quick data report, uh mostly because we don't have any data to report on. Uh, in terms of the grant application for both literacy and math, they're giving us a buy because of the data that isn't there. So we won't be required to provide that data. Uh, but I did take the um presentation that we did fall to fall and kind of condensed that. That was um, there was quite a few slides of information because we looked at things spring to spring. But what these bar graphs describe, red for Scarborough, blue for the national, these are writ, average writ scores. And you can see how we perform, outperform the Nash, but the national group. But also you can see compare year fall to fall, a little bit of improvement. And in terms of these writ scores, one writ score growth is significant, given the size of our school and population. So this is the graph for reading. Next is math. Same, um, pretty much the same trend. And then the third slide is on the S C L. And here at Wentworth, our goal was at least one positive growth change favorable in at least two topics. And Wentworth met the goal. There is no change in those bottoms, self-efficacy and emotion regulation because those were new topics we added in terms of consistency. Uh, and I'm going to turn it over to Kelly to report out on um the three areas.
So even though we don't have any official state data, this, this spring, um, a lot of growth and progress has taken place over the course of the year at Wentworth. I do want to start by that bar kind of across all three sections of literacy, math and S C L. The August by appointment days, this was our um third, this will be our third year upcoming. Having those days um gives us such an incredible opportunity to build supportive relationships, identify those baseline academic strengths and needs and enhance the confidence for students, for staff, for families, for a really strong start. So we are so grateful to have that opportunity again upcoming. Um, and that really sets the stage for all of the work that we do over the course of the year. So that time together is critically important. Um, and it's sort of um develops this um consistency of um being super focused on each student's individual needs and meeting them exactly where they are. So if we're looking at the literacy, really across all of our set, all of our um domains, but for literacy and math and in the area of technology, we have full-time instructional coaches at Wentworth School. And um echoing a lot of what K two already stated, we could not do this work without our instructional coaches. This year, I think because of the pandemic and because of um Esther funds and because of a lot of different things, we had sixteen new first-year staff at Wentworth between Gen, Gen Ed and special education. And the instructional coaches were critically important in supporting these teachers for guaranteed and viable, very high-quality instruction and curriculum implementation across the um, across the different subject areas. And it's not, um, I can remember when I started teaching twenty something years ago. Um, I can remember my reading instruction being like, we were all reading a book in reading class, right? It was a class novel and we were all maybe answering some comprehension questions. I cannot tell you how far we have come from that instruction. It is so specific and targeted to the students' needs. And we've really rounded out our workshop model, which is consistently implemented. Um, teachers are using running records to make sure that they're very clear on students' reading levels and making sure students are reading those just right books. We've rounded that out with full implementation of From Phonics to Reading for our third and fourth graders. It's actually a K three um targeted solution. But because of the pandemic and some gaps that we noticed in our students, we've fully implemented it in third and fourth grade and have seen some really terrific progress already. So we're really excited about that and proud of the teachers and the coaches for digging in and learning a new curriculum area and implementing it with such fidelity. And for our students who are still striving to reach grade level, we have really robust systems of tier two support for them as well. And so we're really meeting all of our students right where they are and helping them continue to grow. And I'm sure that our state data will show us that when it comes in the fall. Um, moving into the area of math, same thing with the instructional coach. And we have um, we're in, I'm not even sure which year now, Monique, implementation of math and focus. Year eleven plus, maybe? Um, and the continued emphasis on concrete pictorial abstract instructional methodology, making sure students understand conceptually. I spoke a little bit about this with our retiree earlier too. And then using flexible groupings for instruction and pulling small groups during that um independent work time to make sure students are getting exactly what they, what they need, when they need it. And then supporting our striving mathematicians with number sense fluency and problem solving in addition to core instruction um is really, I think we're doing a really great job. It went worth meeting students where they are and helping them move forward. This year's been a big growing year for S C L. There have been a lot of different um instructional strategies in social and emotional learning, a lot of different um ways that we implement it with our core expectations of the respect code. Um, but what we learned from our um panorama data and just in our um, our growth and understanding social and emotional learning needs of students is that we need a bit of a more consistent approach. And I'm so proud of our school for um coming together with leadership from Monique and our S C L um specialist, thank you, Stacy Canapa. Uh, we've brought our S C L committee back together, which just like at K two is a diverse group of teachers, leaders, different people in different roles. And we too have selected a um curriculum, tier one curriculum solution. And we are getting really excited for, to begin full implementation of that next year, which will start with um adult S C L and then some of those signature practices. So um lots of great growth this year and we're looking forward to just keeping that momentum going next year. Thank you.
Questions for K five? Or would you just like a moment of quiet and letting the feeling like you're trying to get a drink of water out of a fire hose here with all this information?
It's really honestly, this is really great to see because I know this goal, you know, we had this goal as a board for two years now. And I know it's been very difficult to track and to monitor and the changes in testing um have made this very challenging to say the least. So to see this is, is really, I, I, I mean, I say great and fantastic and that doesn't feel like strong enough words because this is really amazing growth.
Absolutely. And the, we couldn't do this growth without the support of the building principals and their work with their staff. And it's a wonderful opportunity to recognize that work as well. Because in addition to coordinating and making sure substitutes and classes are covered and all those sorts of things, they're also running and managing these committees and working with classroom teachers uh to stay focused on meeting students' needs, whether it's a student support team meeting or whether it is planning the professional development for uh the S C L work moving forward. So kudos to the principals as well. So for middle school, middle school, again, family and pets, family and pets.
Where's the dad? I'd like to know where the dad is on this one.
Little sister made it the dad.
Yeah, and I noticed on the other one, dad was much smaller than mom too, so.
And smaller than video.
Got some work to put in.
Skiing is pretty big.
Yeah, it was a winter, winter survey. Absolutely, absolutely. So at the middle school, the middle school students generally take the N W A as well. So it is the same piece. You can take a look at the Scarborough uh performance compared to the national group in this group. Um, we have a couple of anomalies where um our Scarborough students didn't do as well. Um, but this is not cohort data um either. And in any kind of data tracking, you really want to see three years' worth of data in that case. So that's reading, same for mathematics in terms of those charts. Um, trying to look at fall to fall and kind of keep track on that. Uh, and then um for the S C L, the middle school uh in terms of the data piece. Um, again, the middle school took a look at this data, dove deeply into the questions uh and took a look at and went through the process of taking a look at core instruction for S C L um as well. And I'm going to turn it over to Kathy so she can share a little bit more about the details of what's been going, happening in the middle school.
Thank you. And um, so in the distant, district target area of safe and inclusive schools, um, like the other buildings, we have reinvigorated our S C L building committee and worked closely with our K twelve S C L specialist, Stacy Canapa. She has just been um a great support and resource and a integral part of our team. We have put together P D for staff focusing on the castle's signature practices and foundational knowledge. Um, we have started our training for ruler curriculum, which we're very excited about. We've done a lot of work and planning. We're going to um continue that planning this summer. As Kelly mentioned, the first year is really about the staff. Um, P D for staff and then incorporating some of the big pieces. Um, and then our unified club this year put together a kindness week, which they planned. They had photo booths, activities during crew and um some other activities. We were able to get our entire building together for quarterly assemblies. And we went to Wentworth School for those. We haven't done that since before COVID. So that was great to bring that back. We started to investigate using incident management add-on in Power School. So right now we keep all of our behavior records in a spreadsheet. That's a spreadsheet that we can see at the middle school. But as our students move to the high school, they don't have access to this. So as a district, starting to put in those records into Power School will really give us a, a bigger um overall look over time of how a student is doing. And I think you guys are all aware of our Raptor Emergency Management System. And we still, today we had someone who came into our school and said, you know, and it was like, wow, this is really a nice system to have, the security. And then another one of our building goals is in the district target area of community engagement. And so we've had more field trips this year. And we've actually had parents who are, have volunteered to go on the field trips with us, which has been great. Um, we had our eighth graders were able to return to the junior achievement in-person visits where groups of students go out to businesses and um spend just about the whole day there and the business plans, activities. My daughter actually was part of um some planning at Patron Oxford Insurance. And I remember when she was a student who went to Bulk Box, their box company. Um, and so I do want to share that we did have an email that was sent to us by the president and CEO of the Junior Achievement of Maine. And what she reported, it was just a great story. She was working at an event in Scarborough and a parent came up to her and shared that her daughter had participated in the J A Job Shadow at UNO. And it made a profound impact on her. She has not stopped talking about the experience at home. And every time they drive by, she points out the building and shares something else she did or learned about during that experience. And really would like to someday do an internship there. So you know, these great stories of just what it means to really, you know, have that engagement with the community, go out in the community, bring um guest speakers in. Um, so this year, I mean, this is just naming a few. Um, high school, students came down and performed a Shakespeare, part of a Shakespeare play, and that, that was the same play that they had, did in the um memorial park this weekend. Cromwell Center for Disabilities was able to actually come back into our school again. Just today, we had a Holocaust survivor who came in to speak to our eighth grade social studies students. And though, and you know, through the read-a-thon, And though, and you know, through the readathon, there were guest speakers that came in to read to students, Jeff being one of them. One, another speaker that came in was our Scarborough Fire Chief. And when he went to read, the group of students and Mrs. Viola's sixth grade class actually wanted to just ask him questions. And so the group decided that they'd discuss his role in the journey that brought him to his career. And he took the time to share his experiences and his story with students. And while they were talking, they talked about how the students were reading the peak novel or the, the novel Peak. And he immediately said, you know what, there's another firefighter who is actually a hiker and photographer, and I think he would love to come in to speak to you. So that just occurred this week and it was amazing. And one of the students stated afterwards, you have inspired me to not worry about the future and enjoy life. And they took away a great message, but it's just like, you know, that the more you do with the community, the more connections you make. And then the, the smaller our community is. And then tomorrow night, we have our art STEM show. So we haven't had an art show ever at the middle school. We were part of a district art show that I don't know what year that ended, but we're very excited for tomorrow night. There'll be, the band will be playing and we also have some STEM projects that will be on display. And then in the area of effective teaching and learning, we have done a lot of work over the last few years on our response to intervention. And we are continuing to refine and make progress on that. Weekly, we're looking at our data to inform instruction, to identify students who might need supports in math, E L A or social emotional areas. It's our second year of our eighth grade math curriculum implementation, which they continue with professional development and received that this year. And then I think I've mentioned this before also, our teachers have collaborative planning time and they are looking at student data to inform their instruction.
And high school? High school, you'll notice.
Do we know if, if mom and dad come in?
Family have heart, folks who have adolescents have heart, family is still in there. Family is still in there.
Mom and dad come in under people. Possibly.
So for the high school, just like middle school as well, we are struggling with the lack of data in the spring. But in high school, we also have another shift that the state has made. And that is, in the previous three years, the assessment was taken by juniors. And as a result of significant feedback from schools and school districts, the interest level of juniors is such that they are more involved in a whole lot of other testing, Scarborough in particular, would be A P testing and S A T testing. And so the state has moved the assessment to the fall. So in the fall, our sophomores took the N W A map assessment. And then the state also changed the assessment. So even those fall scores, map scores, we will have a new assessment or a different assessment in the spring. That said, we will be able to track fall to spring growth. We will still have a RIT score so we can measure that growth as well as a subset of that new assessment. So there is even less to be able to share with you at the eleventh grade, but here is the data for reading. The next slide is the data that we have for mathematics. Again, you can see that separation for mathematics between the national group and our local group as well. Terms of our S E L work at nine twelve, the high school did meet our goal. They had three areas which showed some pretty significant growth in those areas. And that data, as the high school has advisory lessons, and that's how they build their S E L activities in during their advisory lessons. They still use that data and looked at some of those areas they weren't happy with to help inform some shifts in those lessons for S E L. Now I'd like to turn it over to Sue to talk about the details.
So last year, we looked at panorama data and decided that our building goal for, for adults and students alike would be increasing a sense of belongingness. And I think we all know that high school kids really took a hit during the pandemic, working on their independence and working on a lot of that traditional high school growth and change. And so we wanted to kind of work on that on all fronts at the high school. So one piece that we did was at the high school level. At all of our staff meetings this year, we broke into small groups. It was a different group every time. We had a great little tool that helped mix everything up, but they would have a topic to discuss. And we found that since we had done Zoom faculty meetings for so long, coming back together in a big staff that's over a hundred people, having those small, we broke out into small groups every meeting and had some meaningful discussion, which I think proved to be really good at making, remaking connections with, with the adults. We continue, our advisory program has been in place for years now. Originally, it was one lesson for all four grades. We, and we do that twice a month. We've now broken it into separate strain for each grade level. So as they go through high school, it's new lessons every year. And so one piece we've been working on some last year, the second half of last year and into this year is developing a second lesson for each, each of our lessons so that if a teacher who's worked, working with these students for four years, if they look at a certain lesson and think, I don't know that that's going to work with my particular group. There, we're building a second lesson that they could look at and see if they think that would work better. And some of those lessons have been created by the teachers themselves and they're sharing them with us so that we can share them on a broader platform. And some our S E L team are continuing to work and grow those. I should also say that our two interns, admin interns, the last two years have been helping with some of that work as well. So that's, that's, we're really working to grow that program. We are developing a toolbox for embedding S E L strategies within classes and providing training to staff. We did some of that at our March P D day. We, our staff taught some lessons to the staff in the afternoon that they could transfer into their classes. We are developing a guidance curriculum and increasing opportunities for our counselors and our social workers to get in to those smaller advisories, meet and work with the kids so that our students are really seeing the student services department more often and in meaningful ways. We have always, we're always doing this, increasing opportunities for students outside the classroom. Our career placement counselor is always providing field trips or speakers to come in all the way up to our internship program, which is two periods a day, every other day for a semester. So she is always growing that program for us and doing some really wonderful things with students. And she also is working on leveraging some partnerships to increase that support for students. And we're doing a lot of good work on that front. So this, this is just our sense of belongingness this year. So you can see that we were in the forties last year and so all of our numbers are moving up and you know, I think all of our activities from athletics, we're just getting more and more consistent as we move away from COVID. And I think our students are showing us that that's working this year alone. We had three different spirit weeks where we did the fall and then student council kept coming back and saying, could we have another one? And so we've, we've been trying to encourage any of those things. We had an extra dance this year in March. So when students come to us and ask for extra things, can, can we do those things as much as we are able, we try to provide them with that because we think it's great for everyone.
And not to be outdone. Our leaders, our building principals, as well as our central office staff also participate in what are our professional learning committees. And we had two of those this year. One is response to intervention where that group researched and studied planning a shift from complying with R T I requirements over to a multi-tiered system of supports for students, focusing on not just literacy or math, separate from social emotional learning and absenteeism, but to bring it all together and have a more whole child approach to the support system. So that group has been planning, doing research and will start to roll out some new shifts in the coming year. In terms, did you want me to do the D E I piece, Jeff? I don't know. I don't know. In essence, the leadership council has been providing professional development and equity and inclusive culture. We've had Principal Kefele come in for several days to work with our leadership council. He's also provided professional development on S E L and the connection between S E L and D E I. And particularly that March Professional Development Day where we had the Phillips Collaborative come in and work specifically with staff. But there's also some vision work going on in the different phase levels with the D E I teams, leader, staff, students, trying to link and align with the Board of Education's Districtwide Committee as well, so that we're all moving in the same direction. And then finally, crafting a strategic vision for Scarborough for all efforts to D E I, both with actions and timelines specifically.
Did you measure, did you memorize those four bullets? I just, I swear, I just wrote those about six hours ago.
My copies.
Oh, okay.
Have the words.
All right, there you go.
It's low tech, but sometimes it's effective.
Going to say, wow, that was impressive.
No. So in terms of this progress, it really becomes for us as a district, staying the course with these focus areas and to continue to make incremental progress moving forward. So we are going to be proposing and in my transition conversations with Katie, who is here tonight, thank you, thank you, thank you. We're looking at shifting those goals just slightly instead of a 10% increase in growth targets. On the next slide, I think we've got a rewrite of those goals. We'll stick with the S E L goal as is in terms of that positive growth change, but looking at 5% improvement in the percentage of us students who are meeting or exceeding those growth targets. And we will have the data, the data will come to us, so we will be able to report out on that. And now shifting into, I think that is another duplicate slide. Although those global citizenship and community engagement, that we can get that data through the panorama pieces as well. And shifting gears into the E S A overview, there are three titles from which we receive funding through the state from the federal government. Each of those projects has to align with district and building goals, and that's why this presentation all is focused around goals and the progress. You'll note in terms of our grant allocations, a trend in that data. And the trend is a downward trend. So what we're trying to do is consolidate and stay focused and put our monies in certain areas that align with our goals and keep, we can keep going. We have to allocate that funding for services. This is title one for neglected or homeless students. There's a family engagement piece. And there are some services that are eligible for private schools, the private school that receives services is Morrison Center. So in terms of title one A, we're looking at to continue to fund the early literacy teacher that's at Blue Point. After a couple of meetings with the principal there and with that staff person and looking at the data, we may expand that to also include mathematics. What she does is she works with the entering kindergarten students and really tries to make sure that they have those foundational skills, those early literacy skills, which we know are important. So the funding would continue to be at Blue Point and be allocated for that purpose. For title two A.
Before we go on to that, can we just point out again, you know, another plug for people to fill out free and reduced lunch forms. That becomes a difficult ask in our current environment where all of our students receive free breakfast and lunch here at school. But it, it continues to be a piece of data that is looked at to determine our funding.
And not only our funding for title one purposes, but also within our E P S funding model as well.
About that?
Sure.
I think that means it actually doesn't matter if we qualify or not. It's the number of applications that represents people who participate in submitting applications. So even if you don't think you're going to qualify, it's still worthwhile for families to fill out applications.
Absolutely. And for title two, the focus of title two is on professional development. And those are the, the must dos in terms of title two. With that allocation, our thinking is to continue to fund the K twelve S E L position. That will be an important position moving forward next year because she is working with each of the three different buildings who are implementing that core curriculum. We did put a portion of those, that funding transferred into the local, again, because of our decreasing allocation. And then title four, because title four and its complexity, what we've decided to do is to shift those monies into title two A in order to support continued professional development. It's allowable and it helps us really provide resources where our goals lie. So our next steps in terms of the application specifically, the deadline is August first. They've yet to open. We do have our preliminary allocations, but we're going to continue to analyze the data. Those groups are doing that on an ongoing basis. We're going to refine our goals and focus areas and then develop and implement action plans like we've done this year. And you'll see some quarterly reports along the way. And last but not least, this is also an opportunity for the public, the community to become involved in the grant, the projects, sharing ideas or asking questions. Feel free to reach out to me or to Katie. And I thank you. And I thank the support of the building leaders as well as the classroom teachers and of course, our students who have worked very, very hard this year. Thank you.
Hey, Monique, before you run away, I, we talked about something in the curriculum committee meeting, which I would love for you just to reiterate here. So I had asked about the Blue Point position that you had mentioned is specifically related to filling out those particular forms. And I had said, if we have success with the new consolidated school, how that might look or how that might benefit the district. Can you explain that? Cause I, I feel like that's good for everybody to be aware.
Absolutely. Because we are what's called a targeted assistant school, that staff person who is title one funded can only service those students in that school who qualify. There may be students at eight corners in Pleasant Hill who might qualify. As a consolidated school district, we have this one position, they could service all of our students who qualify. And so that's one of the, one of the differences. The other piece that as Katie and I were talking about renewing subscriptions and things like that, many of our subscriptions are building based. And while subscriptions are, do rely on enrollment numbers, but even in just that one application, we saw savings of $14,000 if we were one building. So there are other sorts of benefits, cost benefits as well that surface.
Thank you. Yeah, that's what I wanted to emphasize. So we'll give our building committee report shortly and that's not in it, but you know, I, I think that that's important as we're discussing ways, especially for the community to understand how this truly benefits the broader community, not just individual neighborhoods. I, I think this is really important because they're very well, I mean, it's very probable that there are students that are at eight corners and over at Pleasant Hill who are not able to benefit from that specialist because of, you know, the situation of where those forms are being submitted from at this point, kind of showing need and but we know we have a greater need. So I, I feel like this is another good selling point for the community to understand, but for us so that as well as the public that's listening that, you know, it's one more talking point. Because these are the things that unless, you know, we had that conversation in our curriculum committee meeting, we might not realize, wow, we should be talking about this too, because you know, it's, we all understand that. at that young elementary age is really, those are the crucial learning years. And so as kids fall behind, we hear this time and time again. It becomes harder and harder to get them back on track. So, you know, and then we're seeing all this funding continually. You showed the data for the last three years is decreasing and decreasing. So it shows that if we can really utilize and be more efficient with those funds, I think it, you know, your data shows a lot. So thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. I echo that. Thank you so much. That's a lot of work. So thank you very much. All right, are there any questions for Monique now that she's sat down? All right. All right. Agenda item, was your report done? I'm sorry, I didn't, okay, thank you. Agenda item 11.0 is a chair's report. My report is going to be very brief. Really, the main thing I need tonight is a volunteer. So every year, if you could go to the next slide, every year, the Main School Boards Association holds an annual delegate assembly. It's actually a part of their constitution that they, each school board and technical school has the option of electing a voting delegate to participate in the, in the delegate assembly. So what happens at this assembly is that this is when governance and policy decisions that'll affect them are dealt with. So they, they are discussed, they are voted on. So it's really, really important that each school board be elected, or I'm sorry, be represented. I can't overstate that enough because these are essentially the resolutions that they adopt, the discussions that they have, really set the tone for their, the, their tone for how they will advocate on behalf of schools with elected officials. So, and that includes legislative proposals as well. So this year's assembly is going to be a virtual meeting. It's Saturday, October 21st. I have participated in the past. Gillian participated last year. What is expected of a representative is to read through the proposals as you, you'll get them as it gets closer to the date in October, to read through them, to really digest them, come back to the board meeting, the next, the closest board meeting, present them to the board, ask for feedback, so we can kind of assemble positions. And then you would, you as a representative would be responsible for representing our collective views at the assembly on the 21st of October. So you would be responsible, responsible for speaking up and saying what, what it is that we would like to see from the proposals. You would vote on behalf of Scarborough, and then you would report back afterward. You would report back the results afterward at the next board meeting. So is there anybody who is interested in participating this year? If you're interested. Thank you, Freila. All right, and that, the other thing is, is it just to keep on your mind, or keep in your, the back of your mind, every year in the fall, MSCA and the MSMA holds an annual conference. They haven't posted the dates yet, so I don't have any update for you. It is typically in the October, November timeframe. It's a really, I've found it incredibly insightful. I know Diana and Jeff attend every year as well. It's a really good opportunity to meet other board members and to really get some more education into your belt, about your role and what, what you do and issues that are impacting boards across the state as well. And then, of course, administration as well, things that they impacting the administrations across the state as well. So when, as that more information comes out, I will, I will update you. And then, any questions for me? All right, perfect. All right, agenda item, oh, where are we now? 12.0 is the committee reports. So, all right, first is the finance committee.
So we last met on May 8th at 3:30. We discussed feedback from the town council finance committee and discussed the value of requested cost-cutting scenario presentations and decided it was best to wait for the final feedback from the town council before proceeding down this road. We basically reviewed our budget for better understanding as we prepare for June, or it's June now. And we were kind of waiting on the town council meeting, also the town council finance committee meeting. And we will be meeting again, I think, June 5th, if I'm not mistaken, next Monday, to review their meeting, and Kate will be reporting back to us on, on that conversation, and we'll be discussing further at that point.
Perfect. Thanks, Jenna. Any questions? Next is policy.
We had a, also had a meeting in May, May 8th. We've worked on the policies that were presented at the last meeting. There were minor adjustments to AC, GIC, and JICIA. I expect them to come up for second reading at the next meeting. And then we have our next meeting on Monday, right after the finance meeting, at 4:30 to 6:00. We're going to continue hitting the icon column, J suite of the policies, and we'll just keep working through all the ones that need to be updated. We also are going to hit the realignment and schedule superintendent review that is scheduled for this meeting, which is making this meeting very long. So we're going to adjust that schedule with mine with the adjustment of the elections table. So it may, may, may get a different one a year probably. But that's it. It'll be very exciting. You should all come and talk about policy.
We'd love to have you. All right, Brian.
So I don't have the dates up there, but we last met, I believe it was May 11th. I'm not going to go through ESA because you heard all about it tonight. So thank you so much to Monique. And I also want to thank her just in general for, you know, her contributions that she has given the district over the years, but especially during my short time on the board. Just super thorough. I appreciate that. Super organized and really a wealth of knowledge. So we are losing a true asset, but we're excited to have Katie come in, and she's already started to join our meetings as well. So that's something that's up there as well. So Katie has joined. We've started talking about some of those next steps as well and, you know, just helping her transition. The, I'm going to show on the next couple slides, I thought, I realized the meeting was getting long, but this is something everybody's been looking forward to. So there's, and there's a lot of work that's gone into it, is the external guide has finally been completed for the public, as well as for all of us, and it's fantastic. So I just wanted to give a quick guide so everybody understands how to get there and where to find it. So those are on the next couple slides. We addressed summer planning, and so there's a lot of different opportunities for both staff as well as students. For staff, it ranges from curriculum work just within their departments or their teams or literacy workshops. And then students, it basically runs the gamut. So basically, every different grade level, we have elementary reading academy, middle school connections, high school credit recovery, and then special services, extended school year programming. So there's a lot that's being offered over the summer, which is nice to see as well. And then I just wanted to cover, because this is another question that we had, and just make it available for the public to see if they haven't attended any of our curriculum meetings. But some people have asked, how is PD determined within the district? And I think that it's just good to be aware of this, just because it does affect the whole district. It's not just individual schools. So we discuss that, excuse me, discuss that it's typically the responsibility of the school and then district leadership. Ultimately, this is superintendent. And then there's needs for professional development come from a variety of different data. So it's nice to see that teachers can give feedback, there's survey data, student performance data. It really comes from a lot of different places. And then in terms of speakers or outside organizations, that usually comes from recommendations from staff, and then they're checked as well with additional references, sometimes outside of the school as well. So real quick, this is just a quick overview. This is if you go to the district website, you'll be able to hover over central office, and this will show you how you guys can get to the external curriculum guide. And so you'll click on curriculum and assessments. And then you'll see this page come up with the nice student artwork there, and you'll click on that red button that says K-12 curriculum documents. And then this is, on this next slide, there's steps three and four. You'll choose whichever grade level you're specifically looking for. So is it primary, is it intermediate, middle, and high school? If it's primary, you'll notice that step three, that's what I had clicked. And underneath it, it has kindergarten, first grade, and second grade. And I didn't put this on here, but if you then click into that, then there's a whole bunch of documents that you, which is actually the full curriculums for the kindergarten. For instance, if I had clicked on it and it brings you into a Google Drive or a Google document. So everything is very easily accessible by the public, and it's super detailed. So I didn't want to put all that in there. That felt like this was enough. But I wanted to make sure that everybody understood that. And I encourage, you know, the public as well as the rest of the board to go check it out. You know, I know I will specifically for kindergarten, knowing I have my daughter going in there. But I just, I know that we've had the public asking for this for a little while. So thank you.
Thank you. This is a huge, huge, exciting process. Are there any questions for Brian?
I just want to comment, just thank you for all the hard work that you have all put into making that. I know it's taken a really long time, but it's also taken a lot of collaboration in order to do so. And it's a lot of information that parents are always looking for, families are always looking for, and a lot of questions that you might have, you might not even have to deal with anymore just because it's all available for families to see. So appreciate it.
I just wanted to also ask, just to build upon your, your comment about the school lunch or the, the application form, is there one particular type of time, no, Jesus, time of year that is best to have a big push to fill that out? Or is it just rolling?
Generally, the start of the year, but you can certainly fill out an application at any point in time. They're always available.
All right, communications committee is next.
All right. Well, we had our last meeting May 11th. Our next meeting is next Thursday. We had our first roundtable last Thursday. Jenna and John were also there. We had a variety of people, new faces and familiar ones. We were able to use the Pleasant Hill School. Jim, and thank you very much. We talked about a lot of things. There was some curriculum discussion, questions. Of course, people wanted to talk about the lands, the new school, some school lunch questions, or, you know, just a discussion about how long the free lunch program will go for. And, you know, bullying, observations, lots of, lots of little topics. I can't even, I couldn't even name them all, but a lot of interesting little conversations, I thought.
Yeah, I'd like to add that, you know, we had a couple who made new friendships while they were there. So it was really nice, some exchanging of phone numbers. And it was also really nice to see some, I think that day, there was also an event happening at Wentworth. But there were some parents that went to the school, but they had a flyer in French. So I was really, really excited to actually see it because we had no idea. We, I had never seen a translated document before, so it was really impressive to see it in action. Got to whip out my Google Translate and kind of figure out how to navigate them to where they needed to go. But it was really nice to see that in action.
Thank you. Any questions?
Can I just ask, so where, based on the topics that were discussed, is there feedback that's either being shared with certain individuals? Or what, I guess, what's the, the next step in holding that and hoping, hoping there's some sort of action item that comes from that?
Yeah, I mean, I feel like it was super casual conversation, nothing like overtly.
No one really had any issues. It was just, we were just there talking about whatever popped into your head, and we just, it was casual conversation. They said, oh, what about this? And oh, how about that? Just, you know, what do you think of this? And not that we, we didn't really, nobody had like issues and like, all right, I'm really upset about this or I want this to happen. It was just more of, they just wanted to come out and talk to us. And, and we, you know, we listened and they talked and we talked and they listened. It was, it was good.
Yeah, no, I was just curious because I see things, as the curriculum chair, I'm going, hmm, I'm wondering what that was about? Like, is that something we should be talking about? But then I'm also seeing, you know, what is an important topic like bullying? And I'm like, geez, I hope that it, you know, maybe it was just more of a casual conversation. But if it's something more important, just making sure that it gets the right people.
Yeah, I mean, we, there were no specific questions for us. Just one was wondering about policies. And, you know, we were able to point her to the policies on the website and what was available there and what we had coming up. In terms of curriculum, just somebody was asking about phonics. And we heard about, you know, we, Jenna was able to answer those questions and.
Someone also asked about, is curriculum available?
Yes, yes, yes. And we were able to say, it's, here it is. Yes, it is up, yeah. Yeah, but I think, yes, in the future, I mean, we had some things, something in particular, we would look to point them to the right person or connect the right person. Certainly, when we have our meeting for the Building Steering Committee, we'll bring any little bits of feedback there. So, yeah, I don't know. Maybe in the next coming ones that there will be more people or somebody with different questions will definitely have a little bit more structure, I think.
Yeah, I think it helped that it was us and not everyone from the buildings there. It just seemed more informal. Everyone was very comfortable and just hanging out. Some people brought their kids. They kind of just ran around in the gym while we were there and had coloring sheets available for them. And even those kids were making friends while we were all chatting. So it was really just nice to have the members of the community just trying to get to know more about our school and our community. Oh, yes, and we had cookies that, I hope it wasn't too big of a mess the next day for staff to clean up at breakfast time.
Awesome. Thank you, Gillian. All right, long-range facilities planning?
Our next meeting will not be next Wednesday. No, I just threw a date in because I was checking with Todd, and it doesn't work for him. So we're going back and forth trying to figure out what's, what's going to be best for him. He's got a lot of stuff going on, so as soon as I can hammer it down from him, I will. Actually, let's check right now and see if he responded. Nope. So as soon as I know, I'll send something out tomorrow. I'm sure I'll hear back from him by then.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you. DEI.
We canceled our meeting that was last week because of school conflicts was not yet rescheduled. We tried to reschedule amateurs, really tried to get people to figure out a date. But it's, when you try to reschedule a date, it's always difficult. So we had a meeting prior to that earlier in May, the first week of May. And it's very similar to the last, and great participation. We had a lot of members there. I think we had almost 20 people again, and we broke up into small groups and continued working on the strategic plan. I'm very hopeful that we are going to finish that strategic plan pretty soon to be able to present that to the board, which is kind of the goal. And then we're also turning and looking at governance, my favorite procedure. Procedures. So I think we're taking turns leading the meetings. Different committee members are being kind of elected to run a meeting or to facilitate a meeting after the chairs open the meeting. And I offered to take on the policy and procedures. I'm just sort of to think about how we govern in terms of how do we vote, sort of how attendance policies and just sort of have a regular business practice so that things become orderly.
Awesome. Thank you. Is there any questions for Freila? Building Steering Committee.
So we had some really positive success with the first round of tours that we did open to the public. And so we are doing a second round, but we're modifying the times mainly because we realized, and you'll notice the dates as well, they're not all on the same day as we kind of paired up a couple of schools last time. Because we realized as people were touring the schools, they weren't necessarily following us. They were just going to the schools that they felt like maybe affected them or they were most interested in. So you'll see, this starts next week. And I invite and encourage all the board members that can make it to any of them. It would be great to have some new faces. If you guys hadn't seen them last time, it was really good just to hear some of the feedback from people who had joined. And because of that, we've actually gained some, if you want to call them advocates, which is really nice. It's actually really nice, and some of them have really jumped on board, gung ho, you know. It's actually really nice. And some of them have really jumped on board, gung ho, you know, wanting to help us out however they can. So this has become a nice little opportunity for us to get feedback. So you'll see June 6th is Blue Point at 3:45. June 7th, we have the middle school and Wentworth one right after the other. June 8th is Eight Corners at 3:45. And then June 9th, which is next Friday, is Pleasant Hill at 3:30. And then in terms of, and again, that's open to anybody in the public that wants to come. In terms of our next Building Steering Committee meeting dates, we're starting to meet every two weeks just based on the load of stuff that we have and kind of where we're at in the process of things. So June 5th, which is next Monday, is 6:30 to 8:30. That's at the high school AP room. It's also available via Zoom if people want to join that way. And then June 20th, same time, 6:30 to 8:30 in the council chambers.
Perfect. Thank you. Any questions? Any liaison reports? All right. All right, agenda item. I can't read my own writing, excuse me. 13.0 is new business, 13.1 is appointments, 13.1.1 is the second year probationary professionals.
Right, so I'll just refer to this slide. I won't take the time to read off all the names. But these are, these are our second year probationary professionals being nominated for their second year.
Do I have a motion to approve the second year probational professionals?
So moved.
Second, any discussion? All in favor? Perfect. Thank you. It's unanimous. 13.1.2 is the first year continuous contract professionals.
So same drill, different slides. So this, these are our staff members being nominated for continuous contract.
Do I have a motion to approve the first year continuous contract professionals?
All moved.
Second, any discussion? All in favor? Perfect, unanimous. Thank you. 13.1.3 is a middle school humanities instructional coach.
So Dylan Nay has been nominated to fill this position created from a resignation. Mr. Nay received his Bachelor of Arts degree in history from Stonehill College. And he attended the ETAP program at USM, also earned his master's degree in education from USM. He's been a middle school social studies teacher and area middle school since 2012.
Do I have a motion to approve the middle school humanities instructional coach?
All moved.
Second. Is there any discussion? All in favor? All unanimous. Thank you. 13.1.4 is a high school resource room teacher.
Steve Grindel has been chosen to fill this position created from a retirement. Mr. Grindel earned his bachelor's science degree in education from the University of Maine and his master's in business from Huston College. He's been a teacher at the Future Builder School for 21 years and most recently has been an ed tech three for Scarborough Schools.
Do we have a motion to approve the high school resource room teacher?
So moved.
Second, any discussion? All in favor? Perfect, unanimous. Thank you. 13.1.5 is a Wentworth math, Wentworth math support teacher.
Jessica Pava has been selected to fill this position created by a retirement. Ms. Pava received her Bachelor of Arts degree in mathematics from Keene State College and her Bachelor of Science degree in nursing from USM. She's been a K-12 mathematics teacher for 16 years and currently is a K-5 mathematics teacher at Buxton Center Elementary School.
Perfect. Do we have a motion to approve the Wentworth math support teacher?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you. 13.1.6 is a K2 instructional coach.
Jennifer Pinkham has been nominated to fill this position created by retirement. Ms. Pinkham received her Bachelor of Science degree in elementary education from USM. She's been an elementary classroom teacher for several years, beginning in 1992. Most recently, she was the math coach interventionist for grades K through five since 2017 in MSAD 6 by Eagle.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the K2 instructional coach?
All moved.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you. 13.1.7 is the high school junior school board representative. Do I have a motion to approve the high school junior representative?
All moved.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? All right, congratulations. Okay, agenda item 13.2 is a superintendent authorization of summer hires.
Yeah, can I hire people over the summer?
Do I have a motion to approve the superintendent authorization of summer hires?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion?
Yes, are these for your personal benefit or is it?
No, district, this, our student needs, meeting our student needs.
Excellent.
All in favor? Perfect. It's unanimous. Thank you. I'm going to bundle 13.3 and 13.4. So do I have a motion to approve the meeting minutes of the May 18, 2023 workshop? And the meeting minutes of the May 18, 2023 business meeting?
So moved.
Second, any discussion? All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you. 13.5 is the middle school donation?
Yeah, this is really, really, really cool to read. Scarborough Middle School has received a generous donation to their student activity account. An anonymous donor has given a total of $6,000, $3,000 to the eighth grade class, $2,000 to the seventh grade class, and $1,000 to the sixth grade class. The donation was made in recognition that fundraising has been severely curtailed over the past few years and that enrichment opportunities for our students were likely to suffer from the loss of funding. The money will be used to help pay for activities such as field trips, educational events, speakers, assemblies, and student recognition. We respectfully request that the school board approve acceptance of this donation on behalf of the middle school with many thanks.
Awesome. Do we have a motion to approve the middle school donation?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion?
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you very much. All in favor? Perfect, it's unanimous. Thank you. Agenda item 14.0 is a motion to go into executive session pursuant to one MRSA 4056A for the purpose of discussing the superintendent's annual review to return to public session. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion?
Yes. I'm concerned by the time and if we may need to make a motion to stay, have business pre on 9:30, it's 9:10 at this point in time.
So I think we have to, if I'm incorrect, please correct me, but I believe we have to start it as it gets to closer to 9:30. We have to come back in here, open back up.
Everyone knows.
Yeah, and then vote to extend it at that time. All right, all in favor? All right, thank you so much. We will return soon. Yeah. All right, thank you. Um, okay, so do I have a motion? We're back to, thank you. We're welcome. We're back to public, um, session. We are not done with our executive session. So what we are going to do is vote first to extend the time beyond nine thirty. Um, so do I have a motion to extend the meeting?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? Perfect. Thank you. Okay, do I have a motion to go into executive session pursuant to one MRSA 4056A for the purpose of discussing the superintendent's annual review not to return to public session?
Oh moved.
Second, any discussion? All in favor? Perfect. Thank you. And then I, item fifteen point O is adjournment. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second, any discussion? All in favor? Perfect. Thank you so much and have a great evening.